Hey man, get that thing out of the way, it's game time. Are you tired of being played by barber shops who just can't seem to get it right? Do you get tired of silly games your barber plays with something as serious as your haircut? Are you ready for a real cut? Well, come to Game Time Barber Shop. We're open seven days a week, no ride, no problem. We offer Uber haircuts. Located 2409 South Lumpkin Road, Columbus, Georgia. Call us at 762-821-2581. Like us on Facebook. Call today. Game Time Barber Shop, for the winning cut.
Yo what up, this is DJ Chip and you are watching New Way to Live Network. We need people who openly willing to learn, be whatever come they are. But at the same time, treat everybody as you would be in Florida, Oklahoma. They should make some effort to show us that. That shouldn't have any difficulty. But when you want to, uh, Mr. Representative, a child in the classroom, who was very excited about, in, uh, education. And then when a Caucasian child does the same thing, then the black child is told, uh, you're making too much noise. Another child said, "Thank you for your contribution." That's a problem. And that's what we have going right now in this system. Okay, that, that people are, I don't know, even a situation where a teacher identified, told all the children in the class, to let them know when this little black child bothers me. Every child in there became the police when this one black child. Okay, now the police didn't tell the black child, anybody bothers him, let him go. Not to underestimate him, but this child bothers him. But as a teacher, but it's out of ignorance. And I'm trying to say that's what's going to sink our system. The new buildings are failing. But we gotta have new people to house these new buildings.
Back to the reason why we're here. With the one hat that I wear over here, my first hat is the hat of a parent. I have four children that came out of the Schoey County School System. One that's still there. However, the last one is the one that bothers me the most. I've been back on the South Side about a year, well, thirteen months. But I raised my children in North Columbus. They went to North Columbus Elementary, at the Memorial. And my oldest boy and my two daughters went to North Side. The one thing that I, the reason I took them to the other side of town was because I didn't want them to grow up in the environment in the schools that I did. I turned out okay, but still. As I was growing into, um, a mother that cared about what their children saw in the home when they walked outside and in the school, it concerned me, so I moved them over there. The positive thing about being over there was the PTA meeting were like the football games. And it was standing room only. And I was like, wow, really for PTA meetings? And I was excited about it, I got involved in it. And I was one of those parents that I could pick up the phone and call the school without even saying my name, the school knew who I was. And I'm not sure if that was because, um, it wasn't a bit of black people over there? Or if it wasn't because, um, they know me and I was concerned about my children? However, the one thing that occurred that helped my baby, who is, he'll be sixteen next week, while he was going to school, his academics were so that in the fifth grade, he became a Columbus scholar based on his academics throughout school. But here's the problem. He's back over here, but he has never been on this side in the school system before. And this was a bright kid, he's been a bright. My issue is, we've been over here one year, I moved in three schools, Kendrick, Spencer, and now he's at Carver. I have an issue with those three schools as a parent. Because you can make a beautiful brick mortar and walls, but what's going on the inside of that school is horrible. And I want parents, the reason that we brought this, um, parental involvement thing to forefront two years ago, when I became, um, president of the NAACP, was I, I was losing my son on the North Side. What I mean by that, I wanted to give him a cultural experience when we came back over here. Wrong idea. Because over there, he lost his identity. Over here, he's like, he's losing his mind. And for a kid who has a fully paid college scholarship based on his academics to have a ten on his progress report, speaks nothing about him not getting the information, it's the distractions in the school. I went to Mr. Lindsey about a month ago, um, because my son called me. Now, trust me, I'm a community leader, but my mom heard you don't mess with my children. But there was this one little boy, he didn't know who my son was, nobody don't know us. And he just, in school, acting fool, walked up and sucker punched my son and somebody else is recording and put it on Facebook. So my son is calling me saying, huh, come get me. Be embarrassed, it's all over Facebook. And I'm like, first thing I did was I put on my sneakers and I put on my jeans and my t-shirt and I went to the school. Not thinking rationally, I'm thinking I'm going to protect my son. So as, um, Mr. Lindsey, um, and the, um, Mr. Lawrence, um, the coach over there, and my son and I are sitting there, and I wanted to be so upset, but I didn't want my son to see me act like that. I had to put that to, to the side. And I said, okay, what are we gonna do to fix that? Because he has to come back to school. That same kid has to come back to school. And so what do we do? And Mr. Lindsey said, well, I want you to just take him home for the day, he can come back tomorrow. This other kid, this is what Mr. Lindsey said, this other kid is not going anywhere. He transferred from Jordan, he already has a bad record, he's a part of the game. Well, you already told me to take my son out of school, but you're telling me about this other kid. So I'm trying to find out, how do we fix, I never heard of Title I before until I came over here. How do we fix the behaviors of our Title I schools? How do we, um, expect for parents like myself trying to raise a decent adult, um, raise a decent adult with all these other distractions going on? And save face, because I'm tired of pretending like it's not a problem. And it really is a problem. And we can talk about PTA and South Side schools, but it gotta be more than PTA. Um, and I want to give credit to, um, the Junior Marshals Program, because that was the one thing that, that my son got involved, went on to North Side to make sure that he could still pull from us. Um, with Corporal Murray, he was able to see, um, those positive things in the school. So I'm wondering, are those same things going on over here in our schools to where they can see, um, positive male and female influences? Coupled with, if we know that we got students that have issues? If we can do one-on-one assessments with those parents? Because many times it's not the kid. Kids learn those behaviors. So I'm just trying to find out, in a cloud of everything I just said, how do we fix turning a good kid into a rotten apple?
Hello, everybody, this is Johnny Musson with Financial Solution and Associates. And you're tuned into New Way to Live Network.
Lieutenant, uh, Ms. Dawkins, Ms. Jones came, spoke to the Ministry of Life a few weeks back. And we identified the reasons why our schools are this failing to do this. We were talking about attendance, we were talking about discipline, we were talking about grades. And one of the things that we have, have got to come to grips with in our community is that, you know, bad habits, profanity, violence, that we are allowing our kids to be exposed to all the time in these games. Uh, I watched Criminal Minds, uh, one episode in my life. Because I don't need to be watching Criminal Minds, I'm just telling you. And we allow our kids to be exposed to all of this stuff. And I'm talking about parents, we're talking to what we need to do as far as parents are concerned. And sort of a community, uh, that is really getting a bad rap because we have a, a part of our community, and this is not the black community, this is the total community. I have a judge tell me that clearly thirty-three percent of Americans live for the moment. Don't care what God says or what the law says or what the consequences are. And a lot of what we are seeing is the consequences of poverty. There's some serious consequences of poverty that we're gonna have to address. And I'm just, I'm, I'm hoping that, that this forum that we're talking about now, that we will get to the nitty-gritty, the real problems that we as a community have to deal with. You don't say one other statement. I got out of the Air Force forty years ago. I came back home forty years ago. And I came back home wanting to make a difference. I was baptized in the church forty years ago last month. And as I have looked at what we have allowed to happen, the, the atmosphere that we have allowed to be created. And a lot of this is systemic, um, there are instances of slavery that we see going on right now. Every decade since slavery, you can see specific things that the system has done to keep us in our place. Poverty is one of those things. Drugs is another that we're gonna have to just, we gotta deal with this, this, this drug situation in America, and we're talking about in Columbus now. We need to help parents be able to help their kids and parents. And so I'm hoping that this conversation will get down to the real nitty-gritty that some of our, uh, families are doing well. I mean, in the black community, we have some, some of us are doing well. But violence, just alcohol and drugs, profanity. And I'm gonna make one last statement. Dirty language does to the spirit what dirty water does to the body. And you cannot be exposed to all of this filthy language without affecting who you are. And we just got to come to grips with that. And with that being said, I'm gonna let somebody else talk. But we are in the process of, of the internomination of the Ministry of Life. It's in the process of developing a strategy for the church and education. And, uh, we'll be talking more about that.
Thank you so much. I wanted to thank our school board member, Ms. Pat Green, is here from school board. Thank you so much for being here.
Peace and prosperity to you. I'm Dr. Jaleem Hood, the host and executive producer of Dr. Hood's Visions. You're watching New Way to Live Network.
Yeah, I just always forget the parents right now. There's, um, two things I would like to say about the school district. Number one, uh, my, uh, children are survivors of domestic violence. So a lot of things that were going on at the home, he had to die in ball, you know, they wanted to the school. But the social workers from the school and the school district and the social workers from D-Day, never really communicated on the fact what's going on. So really, especially with my, my boys, they were just kind of brushed, um, under the rug and they were available. Because they were act, you know, well, especially when my son was acting out a lot. Now, that being said, um, you know, I can come from here as a family home. My great, you know, he raised us, so this is all from me. I'm smiling in the community, people really don't know what's going on because of the smile that I'm putting on. But, uh, when I asked one of the social workers from the school district after we, you know, were out of that situation, I'm starting over, what resources are available to children? I know when I was growing up, we had counselors, they used to say they have counselors at school. But it seems like they're not available to help when you need the help. Um, I asked one of the social workers, you know, what, what resources could maybe help them? And she didn't know. She's supposed to get back to me. So yeah, we got back to you. That's one of the issues that I have, that sometimes we just get brushed under the rug and we just don't get a response. The second thing is, it's gotta start from the top when it comes to the race relations. And if I had not experienced this myself, I would never believe it. So my son was accused of having a lighter. By, of a white kid, he's, he's black. We went to an IEP meeting, this morning, the teachers said, well, look, we need to send him to a tribunal to scare him into shape. Now, my son's not a bad kid, he doesn't have criminal record or anything. But, uh, he just, you know, acted out sometimes, got in trouble, tell people, you know, made cussing, you got in trouble, went out to kiss my girl, I mean, all these little different things. I, not knowing, agreed. It was the worst thing I could ever done. We end up going to tribunal, uh, because, uh, they never found a lighter. They said he had a lighter, nobody ever saw the lighter, but another little kid. So it's one person that, um, began to get it. My father wasn't with me, he's a white German. Um, we're not, you know, we don't, uh, we're not from the urban background like everybody's saying. I just have a black child. So it's not just the issue of where you come from, it's the issue of what you look like. Because the man at the, I'm not gonna say the names, but the person at the tribunal was a black man. And he told my son right there that he did not want my son to go to, to school with his daughter because he's gonna end up in prison. And he knows that. Now, this he told a twelve-year-old child that, who was accused of something that they did not find. They gave him ninety days to go to what my kids call jail school. But, you know, yeah, it's so weird, yeah, it's so bad, because of my kids, you know. So, um, all of this happened on the big whirlwind. And as a parent, it doesn't know anything. And you're just taking the advice of the IEP committee, taking the advice of administrators. Next thing you know, your child is at the disciplinary school for something he didn't even do. So instead of sending him there, and then I had to make all these kind of threats after I made all the advocate that my, my, my rights were violated. Then I started getting phone calls from top administrators saying, uh, well, you know, we're gonna have to find out how this happened, we're gonna fix this. And they said, they put in the paper that he went to the school, but he never went to the school. That he was on the disciplinary thing. So now, my, my issue is this, when stuff like this happens. Because I'm still kind of lost in how, you know, without an advocate that's not even from Columbus, without an advocate, how parents like myself, I'm second-class raising five children, two males, two teenagers, two in, uh, junior high school, one kindergarten. How do I raise my children in the school district? And I'm having issues, but I don't, I can't get any help because every time you make a phone call, nobody else will answer your phone call. But then until you start making threats, and I don't wanna make threats.
Hello, my name's Lishatyn. I would like for you to watch our show, The A-Girl Show, right here on New Way to Live Network.
Did you know that in today's society, your credit score is like a vital sign in the hospital? It's being monitored at all times. If not by you, certainly someone else is monitoring your credit. It can have various impacts over your life. It can impact your insurance premiums as well as your interest rates. You can be denied the ability to rent a home, purchase a car, get a credit card. Or even more, you can be denied employment. Did you know that over the course of your lifetime, less than an excellent credit rating could cost you over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Twenty percent of credit reports have errors on them, causing lower credit scores. But did you know this? The Fair Credit Reporting Act gives all Americans, including you, the right to dispute and/or investigate any item on their credit report. Inaccurate, erroneous, or obsolete items such as late payments, charge-offs, foreclosures, judgments, repossession, bankruptcies, tax liens, collections, short sales, medical bills, and many other items can be removed from your credit file or can be updated to reflect paid as agreed. Hey, you don't have a minute to waste. Call me today at 706-366-5520. Again, that's 706-366-5520. Let's get started increasing your credit score.
Hello, my name is Star Thomas, owner, operator here at North Lumpkin Beauty and More. And today we'd like to welcome you. I would like to welcome you to Columbus, Georgia's first and only black-owned beauty supply shop and fashion clothing store. We're open from Monday through Saturday, nine AM to eight PM. We carry virgin hair, Remy hair, and natural hair products with brands like Milkyweight, Saga, JBS, and more. If you are looking for competitive pricing, boutique clothing, hair care products, and a beauty shop all under one roof, then stop in today. Mention this commercial to receive your ten percent off.
North Lumpkin Beauty and More, 3448 North Lumpkin Road, Columbus, Georgia. Call us today, 706-221-5243.
Okay, so there are a whole lot of issues here, way too many for me to discuss in this time frame right now. I'm gonna share, we're here about parent role. So let's get right back where we are. And it's important for us to realize, and I've been doing this for thirty-eight, thirty-nine years. So I know a little bit about what I taught them. And I'm not seeing any school district or any school be affected until you have three elements that work together. The school, the home, whether that's a parent, guardian, auntie, grandparent, or whatever, and the community. It's just like a staple stool. You take any one of those legs off, that stool gets destabilized and followed. It's just that simple. Now, let me just ask you this, as far as schools, over the years, schools are taking on more and more challenges than used to be out in community, out at home. Now, we have to be honest with each other, this is not being honest. So we gotta be honest. And the reality of it is, schools have children, a hundred and eight days a year, three hundred and sixty-five, for about seven hours a day. There's someplace else the rest of the time. We have to have the support and working together of the parents and the community. This goes to what Reverend Jesse was talking about. My senior staff and I have been going out to meeting with all thirteen of our struggling schools that time. Miss Gray, you've been to several of those meetings and so on. We've advertised them, we produce brochures, telling you how people can access resources. Uh, and we talked about three things that we need from all parents and parents or any guardian to do. Three things. Three things. Be in school every day you possibly can. On time. That's important. Why is that important? Well, first of all, I don't care how good the teachers are, they can't make an inch of chair learn. School is their first job, they've got to be there. And when parents make that important to the children, that says something. Secondly, just like I hope you all have rules at home, we have rules at school. And I need parents to talk about those rules at home, just like you expect to be obeyed at home. They need to show that same respect for teachers. Now, I admit it, it's a two-way street, I get that. The third thing is this, just simply talking about the importance of good education. A lot of people don't talk about that enough. And we need to continue talking about that. Now, we're not all perfect, I, I'm telling you. I've been here three years, we've got a lot of things to do. We've got, we've got six thousand employees, we're a few thousand kids. That's a lot of these parts, there it is. Okay? Um, but we're working hard at it. We're making progress. Somebody said something about the family schools. When I got here, there were twenty-three family schools. We're down to sixteen, and we're gonna be less than that this year. Okay? It, it's a progress, it takes time. But I want people to understand the progress that we made, but we cannot do it alone. Jamie Bomer, we had him come, he, he has the book that we had him come actually speak to the community. And it talks about the need for us to all work together. The reason I'm in Columbus right now, one reason, one of the many reasons I'm in Columbus and the reason I love it here, is in fact, as I've said so many times before, we're big enough to gather the resources that we can re-employ them where we need to. But we're not so big that we can't get our arms wrapped around this if we all work together. Right now, we are working with the Chamber of Commerce, or, uh, the Chamber here in town, or Chamber of Commerce. We're working our strategic plan. And one of the subcommittees is working on education. And it's critically important that we all work together and identify those resources. Do you know we have forty-two different agencies that deal with literacy in Columbus? How many people do that? Guess what, they did neither. They didn't either. Forty-two different groups. But because of what we're doing with the strategic plan, we're hoping to pull those groups together. On the North Side and the South Side, one reason we invited the district down to the East Central Region to artificially start dividing some of that North-South thing. We have got something I'm excited about, I'm just gonna go ahead and throw it out there. So I've got another fifty-five minutes left. But I was gonna say, I'm excited right now. You talk about some of the educational opportunities in the South may not be the same as Thomas. I can't go in, I can't go into specifics, but we were just awarded a five million dollar grant that's going to go for seven years and focus on college readiness for our most needed students in middle school and high school. Now, I can't name the schools, 'cause I haven't talked to schools yet. We just found this out, this is in the Lance B. ratings. We're going to a meeting next week. But when that happens, all these students, and guess what part of that whole thing is? Parent workshops, parent involvement, how do you assist and work with your children? How do you develop a college-going mentality? And I'm not even talking about college, I'm talking about credentialing. They may not go on a four-year college, they may not need to go to a four-year college. But they're gonna need some kind of post-secondary education training. Everyone of them. Go take your car, your car to a service station. You are not gonna find the old shade tree mechanic anymore. They're putting your car up to computers and diagnostics, that takes required training. Now, we're gonna provide the opportunities, but I need parents to help us make sure those kids are in school, they're obeying the rules, they understand what respect is. And I need the church and the community and everybody else out there, linking arms with the schools to do this, we cannot do it alone, and we will not be successful if we try to do it alone.
Can I, uh, can I address what Sister said about, about?
Can I, can I let the president, when you're ready, I'll come back to you.
I appreciate it. I'm glad everybody, um, is getting the juices flowing. And all that sounds really good for those students who are making it and for those parents who are getting it. But we got so many more parents who are not getting it, and so many more students who are not. And those school, those students are ending up in the school and prison pipeline. So I, what I, my whole focus on sharing my personal story was to find out what the Schoey County School District is doing for them. The one that follows, um, under the specific guidelines and go with different radars. Because we do have mental illness and substance abuse going on in our homes. Not saying, not saying that me, I knew I was crazy, but you know. Um, but, but my, I would like to think that we came from well-rounded and well-to-do families, so we don't have those issues. But our children are going to school with children that have those issues.
But our children are going to school with children that have those issues. And I'm more inclined, or I, I, I think I would feel a lot better if I knew, um, how we fix those kids or how we fix those problems.
So I'm just going to tell about two things we're trying to do right now. And they're both research-based, and people like they're very successful.
My name is Jamaya Bush, and I'm a seven-years-old. I've been on this dance team for two years, and I want to be a dance instructor, and I'm a Catholic girl student.
Hi, my name is Felicia L. Hamilton, and you're watching New Way to Live TV.
Hello, my name is Juan Lane, and thank you for tuning in to this station, New Way to Live. Listen, we can't do it without your help. We need you to send your donations in today. This is how this station operates, and we're trying to do the very best for you and your family with the production that we have. We are really giving it our all, but we cannot continue without your financial support. So please, send your offerings in to PO Box three six one five, Columbus, Georgia, three six, three one nine oh three, in, in care of, of New Way to Live, and we'll make sure that we get it on so we can keep this great program going. If you and your family are enjoying it, we pray that you continue, we pray that you send us a, a offering that we can continue and, and do the very best for you. Um, also, make sure that you watch our, uh, Public Education Program. This is a very special program where it can help you prepare for your next test. The Public Education Program, right here on New Way to Live. Thank you.
Did you know that the majority of people have no will, trust, or power of attorney? What will happen to your children, property, or other assets? If you can't make decisions for yourself, who will know your wishes? Will the appropriate people know where to find all of your personal and financial documentations and information? Well, we have a program developed by attorneys to complete at your own pace from the comfort of your home. You can update this program as needed with no add-ons or surprise fees. You can secure all of your important information in this virtual, password-protected, safety deposit box with easy-to-use services and client support system available. Please, call me today at seven oh six, three six six, five five two zero. Again, call me today at seven oh six, three six six, five five two zero. I hope to hear from you soon.